...
Eh, ma du mekiaka moka, kili du medisha, lebava le motrafoling, le motrapele. N'agennaku ina Daniel Mulele, from ward eighteen. Ki krobolela kase peidi, liri putisho rokona kamogare. Karengase amorele, kesa putisha. Putishu akayama thomokiye. Eh, ki putisha katava yagorengi? Karo ga no, yadi minerali jago tjoamun, kamoka kajona. Hei fitla, eh, kapolelole, tulueyale na kili du tifasohore. Le aroga niya, dilu jijipediji, jago tjoamun, kapaa, e kapaa je taroko yagoo jizi. Lerelena gora petroleumo, petrolee ebey, no shor petrolor, oilor, everything elor, egona mu, i tjoamun. Ebeyli, kakanyo yagoo tusha se chava goreni, se klasse kulega mi shumun. Kapaa, ho kulega, eh, ho tjoala kaya ona ko ho kula, bava le ngopeli na. Kakore rekopanele matata amanchi, ayelorengi. Eh, ba hopela, rihopela gorenak o tjo afasi. Ifela, renaba tchwaabu, le resepishi, warasa ko jise, eh, se orresepishu. Se se we, se ki krobo putisha ngaso na ki dipesenteji. Ten percent, or fifty-one percent, je di bolelo mo, dilu egona mo. Pele reta bolela gora representeji ki je di nyane, berhopela ordi, okava yuari ka ho di shewali. Na arera tla ho tsewa ordi presentechi je, vaya di rural area. Pa tchwaabatjandi na gamaayin, ma filo afapani, ho kar, eh, lempopo province, eh, lempopo kie kolo, even South Africa kie kolo. Ayame South Africa feela. Ah, ten percentage je, ele bolela ngaya ona, itlo re tjoala mo kula, juang. Yo fepari, na ba tchwaabarile egona kamoka mu monagi. Ho ba ke ten percenti, itlo kula ngere na se chava, kasi la yamu kuta man, kare mo geri vala ayetlusi. Ene, ebolela kakorengi, ho yua di rural area, ho ba, ma filo ai ji, aridropo bagai. Ho niya ke kabuya tatpele, ba bolele ti kabu roshi. Ba bolela leka departmentari, ofisiwe, leka ofapana kajona. Ifela, je di we releyama na gamaayin. Li krobo bolela, ele bolela, nela ma roshi, li kirelele, felelele, yualu. Ah, gorri, ifitla lese chaviin, itlo fitla juanka, orko na le ma filo amawe. Ayelore reletse, nimogo ona, vaya ma roshi, le atiba le, lelele motrafoli, asilo ra lekopanele ona. Haifi, kise chaviin, kolo felele jago bonaga la, dilu di di ribe. Ifela se chaviin, disafiiti, horre se chava, laso naso hono govali karulo kamogare, bava, ba dudi, ba tulue wewe. Ba hatetiima, lebona ba hono ho kija, se si si, se si lo egona, se si lo kula. Ma filo ka ofapana, gwa le kase bule, abuleje, leka ba tchwaabadi soxale, like, ba tchwaabalor banale. Eh, ba tushava, he kulo re, diwaz, e, anything ele egona mo ba tum bava, bava goru magai. Dirole ka ofapana, le ho kula, youth. Mo la elor, re youth, le atiba, eh, aleka mushumun, basi ni di kulu. Ma ra feela, kana gwa le reyakoa ordi ten percenti, li tjo le, je di bolelo ago. Di reditlo re kula, mo kua ku omufi, kudurelele la youth, gorri, eh, kulege. Gwa leka ele bo nanaga, ibulami. Renaha, aritsebe goreni, gwa leka hopoluaka kamoka bolela, ake tsebe goreni, se le sidira, kesa utlo tshanaga. Ho ba, itlo ba se ilorengi, mchomo ngokotla, cha dipotla, cha vailor ba kopeli na. Se uke se ilorengi, resewa na monagi, aratswa lela go, reseku tele, retsoanjogo se bolelelela na kuesa lo ona. Gorri dilu rokono go ba kakala. Ki di putishu cha kati dilu egona. Mka iteka feela, kelo ringi. Li kro bolela arava yava lo, eh, ro kula, ka je di kaone, je lo rito, hono du kushisha. Je lo rito, ruto la mo kula, cha hono, ho pikapa, na kaya reina, ho pikapase chava sa reina, le ba tchoki, mulafasi. Hona le ba tchoki, vailor, ababumi. He bo na ba kabonaga la, ke se na lo rengase teka, ko se olesa bolela ago, ifela kadi presentechi je, izi. Maybe more percent, ya je di nguja ba tchwaabadi bolela ago. Mka nor more than more, ele re kira fifty percent, or hundred percent, le taveli kiri amuwe. Ho vele forty percent, or forty-five percent, ye itlo kula se chava. Honarile veleje goreni, ho tjoadi minerali njiwe, presentechi je we, forty percent, or forty-five percent, le na le kira hundred. Eka hona go manage se chava na, trowela, kenna ku ina Daniel Mulele, from ward eighteen.
Trowela, my name is Daniel Mulele, from ward eighteen. Greetings. I have questions. The first question is, when the mineral, eh, mineral, eh, resource, mineral resources and petroleum is split, how is it going to help the community? How is the community going to benefit out of it? Ten percent, are these percentages going to benefit people who are poor? How is it going to benefit because it is not explained in the bill? How is this going to help people who are under traditional leaders? In the places of, in the, in the area in which there are traditional leaders? How is it going to help the people there? It is also not explained. Is this going to benefit people in the youth, or in the area of the youth? The oldest, the disabled? Explain these things. I don't know if this will help, will be of help to the majority of the people. Um, the ten percent, or the percentages, um, suggest that, I would say, between fifty and hundred percent. Maybe let's make it forty to forty-five, that will help the nation. Can this be enough? I support the bill if it can be amended, especially where it will be stated that the people who are very, very poor can be supported. And that the government, even if maybe, um, the government can get fifty to hundred percent, but at least forty to forty-five percent should be given to our nation. This, I think, can be enough to sustain them. Please help, thank you.
Trowela. Eh, naki, kali inaki Ishmael, Ndombe Makuiti. Eh, kali inaki Ndombe Ishmael Makuiti. Kata se amaspa lawa, Bloubek, ward seven, Bogna Farm Village. Eh, eri ki thomeka oboncha ore, na, ke 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 hana na le molawa na ho. Ke hana na le molawa na ho kata se amabaka. Ki jahore, entongo le we, he tjoelela, ho ba, he idirwa, idirwa kalebaaka. En, eh, chee pesen, baba baba bolela, asinki ba hona oboncha mabaka, amolawa na ho, orre mabaka, amolawa na ho. Orre tjoaleja mabaka, amolawa na ho, orre hauancha dilu jipedi. Eh, ke ke, ke le bakalé, lelelele, asinki ba hona oboncha le bakal. En etwa yi dai cha habuzo bezore, separatenessele egona, ba hauancha boobe, le sishew. Or ba hauancha musadi le monena. Then re kaino takana lelele, lelele, challenge, or else at the end of the day, eh, this bill, ona le bai tlo ba benefitang, baba ngwase ba benefit. For example, eh, barile riba nalile a committee. Kahara this committee, ah, ah, ona le mutiwa, ajuan kahara meshate. En mo la meshate ye, ilio na ye, ilaho lang, mo weyapong, weyapjangan di rasha. Eh, eri ki fe ngmthala hapen, komra wilewa bali, eh, separateness, mo ba separatenang, sports and art and culture. Then, operation, yano ba yana yela, yama lo ba, before the separatiwa. Then it simply show us ore, ona lo hona halo yahore, kahara this separateness, ye tjoalela today. Eh, operation ino ba yane la yama lo ba. Then ki muli twangere, ah, I reject this bill. Le ba kailo hori, aritsebe hori, ebasa lela ba tjoaleja molawa na ho. Mabaka abonaki amafein, ay, kapaa ona, heba u tjoaleja ka ona mo hona no. Nah, lesi chava ka kakarejo so kuleya moka ay. En sabu beedi, etwa yi dai cha habuzo bezore, retsoanjiriyo ba le, eh, minister, eh, deputy minister. En eru bo yari le veleje, eh, economy, yana yavore, na ka kakarejo, ya kota kota. Na ay, kapaa di opportunity je di tjoalela. Di tjoaleja ba, di, di oh kula ba dudi, oba di oh kula, ba ba twerempawa go dimu na. Ka ormo nchi, ho kuleya ba ba twerempawa go dimu. Bava le ngopasi, eh, eh, ino ba hori, itangni ritusegi ona risuwe, yavta usuwe, yasar kula. Ki muli bo nanke hana na le this bill, kalebo.
My name is Ndombi Ishmael Makuiti, ward seven, from Bloubek municipality. Greetings to the committee. But firstly, I reject this bill based on the following reasons. We, we, we are not clearly explained as to what would we benefit out of this bill. As long as there's separation on the bill, especially when it comes to, eh, the, 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 the government, then we are going to have problems. Because we are not even sure that we are going to benefit from this bill. The committee should include the traditional leaders. Because the very mines which are, 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 the very minerals which are being extracted from, eh, the areas, are, are being controlled by traditional leaders. And we don't understand how this bill is going to benefit the, eh, the, 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 the people who are staying in those villages. Some time ago, there was a separation between sports and culture, art and culture. And this separation was not very clear to us. As a result, we have become suspicious that the very same separation that is going to be implemented on this bill, is going to create the very same problems that we encountered with sports, arts and culture. Therefore, we cannot accept this bill. We can only accept it if the amendments that we suggest are taken into consideration. There are other one. At the moment, South Africa is in dire need when it comes to economy. There will be a minister and a deputy. How are we going to maintain the two? So that, at the end of it all, the people at the ground are going to benefit. Because they've got a lot of powers. As a result, it's going to be problematic to us because definitely, we are not going to be given, eh, or, and the beneficiary of being, the beneficiaries of this, eh, bill. Therefore, we'll only, eh, support this bill if we include the amendments. Thank you.
Koto, aybelele na. Oh, abulela mo, ki lilimalajane. Ho tjoale, pele ngumpi municipality, ward nine. Ki reki, mano akaka hori, bilie re support. Li bile riboncha le hori, li musho lo ona, oje karulo, maybe, leka ona near fifty percent. And then, ki ede, le je di ngjagore. Di kampani, je di klabe di itla, di tjuakan, kley di itla kamo, South Africa. Riberiboncha hori, di kapali di license. Klabe da di ba hori, di hiraba na ba burina, ba kamo South Africa. Me vay nele ona, hei itla monagini aburina. Iboncha orki, ma niye lo ngori, ikaseru kugeleli, di ngrojara na, di paro gile, mo magaye. Ebey ba tchwaabatsebe kan, pa itaka mlau mara, ba me ike isho hori, vanabaka South Africa ba avereka. Ki je lo ngori, di boncha, or, mchomo nre kabe, economy arana ika kula, le vanabaka South Africa ba katavela. He, kampani ngule ngule we itla kamo, ihira vanabakamo. So, raleboha, ka bilie, thanks very much.
Trowela, good aft, good morning, good afternoon, eh, peace be with you. My name is Lilimalajane from ward nine. I stand here to support the bill, and that the government should be given fifty percent of the proceeds. And then companies that our government is allowing to come to South Africa, should have licenses. And they should be able to hire our children, because our children are not working. The mines, when excavating, or when they're taking out the oil or whatever, they should not leave us with cracked houses. Because that is what is happening when this rock blasting, the houses are being cracked. And now, we say, please let the companies hire our children when they come and excavate in our country. Thank you.
Oh, abulela mo, ki mushiwoody, Marriott, Rovimbi, from ward twelve, under le pele ngumpi. Ho bolela, kasi bole di ses, satwa ngofita mo. Le na ki bolela de simla, ke kamhoi ba, bolela kagona. Hori, li wo fein dieta, le lebe len, renava aswa, ka osivereki. When number two, le skelarela, likirele di chalete. La ja di chaletele, na la chala kame ravien, la le vala reina. When number three, ho pelago hori, li enlu kua, ho ba housing, le ba bujengro. Ba tchwaamo, kaburina, ke tchwaabroko, vanababrnavala. Because karen na ki ward committee, he barbonakuaga, unukavara barile na le arobaala. Hanirleri departmentanalele na na, rono feela rawa, reta bo fa maseka. Gwa lo bilie, ki ama lile na, ker bo fa maseka. Entongo le we, li kuma nankuaga dimu, li tewo genfasi, li temoki, li temerutenge, reta temaseka, ki ama lile na, kfeita ka royal.
My name is Marriott Luvimbi, from ward, eh, twelve, at Ngambi. The first thing that I need to highlight here is the youth. We have a very serious problem with our youth. And I hope this bill is going to engage or involve our youth. Secondly, we would like to ask the committee to be, to be proactive. And really go all out to control and make sure that the management is properly followed. There's a crisis about housing in our area. And as a committee, as a ward committee member, we are always asked questions that, eh, you people do sleep, and when we have problems in the housing section. All what we are asking is, be proactive, make sure that the monies that you get, get to right places. And make sure that you disseminate information, so that we are able to talk to our people on the ground. Thank you.
My name is Merilitwalo, from ward fourteen, Blokwan municipality. I totally agree with the bill on one condition. If only the licensing is going to be given to the right people, and especially our youth. Our mining sector is not fully engaging with the youth. In most cases, they hire the foreigners. So I think, I only support this bill if our youth and our traditional leaders, and only the local people are going to be fully engaged. And they are going to be fully given the responsibility of handling the licensing and the mining resources. Thank you.
Eh, Richile, imena Meri Mapitzolitwalo, ko suka ward fourteen. Ni pumele na 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 ombislo u, na oseketeela, ngofu, ngofu, loco, ko ni kuame mpumelelo kumbeti license. Eka van lavava ngafanela, ngofu, ngofu, vanchoakuwa bo na, va wieruaka snene. Yeku malechoaku, eka mkaru, utalaku, ba kurri, va, aki ba matikuale handela, ba kumaka mentiro, lava wieruaka. Ematsa ngweniye va aki, va la kaya, ko tani, ni seketeela snene, lo ku kufana ku wieruava ancho. Ku wieruanti, osi, kume varangere, va xinto, na bo na bava, na bu tchlamliri, eka le shisngata ba swkarsumelela, ingo.
Thank you very much, um, I made a mistake, but, eh, because you are doing so well.
Ki hopela twarelo, ma ra kapakalawo re li, li tuncha lo ro, le abonela gora, le bolela kase lo se lis kushisha.
I, I'm very impressed.
Ki kwa ke, ke ta bile, ibile ke lo kuluhiile.
So I must make it a point, um, that we continue with that trend.
Ki hopela gorri, ritwelepele ka mkoru shumile ngagona.
I didn't say how much time you have.
Asikibolelo gorri le na le na kweka, eh.
When you come here.
Kletse na gafa.
But you set your own record.
Li peji, nako, la ideas falin.
So please keep up that good work.
Ho pelago, ritwelepele ka ona mho.
Eh, I didn't say so, because we're a little bit few in the house then.
Kana ku yo, ibirisenini kamogarakopano, yo, iki kamhoi ki singa bolela, se.
Now, leave that the hall is so big, you are so, you are also a substantial number.
Eh, kamo kolo ye, ikiye kolo nyana, go meli le na le abonagaala.
So, because you set up a very good pace, we will try and stick to that pace.
Kakore le ideye ile, eh, na, li peji nako, eh, koto fajago, reta sepele kaya ona.
And will be fair to everyone who is in the house.
Reta leka gorri reyaka reji, buhli.
Can we take the second round of hands?
Ro hopela gorri, reji, eh, le gato la wibi ilila, we imisha matzogo.
Can we take the second round of hands? Eh, eh, wait, wait, eh.
Emela mpeli re li shupi, ngoro lo hono tla kali nomorjiu.
Just raise your hand, I will see you.
Imisha matzogo, ki tla hona golo bo na, ki li bi je.
Just raise your hand, I will see you, because if you stand up, then, eh, I don't know which chair you are going to sit on.
Ki tla li bi jaku, heka olatalanana.
Number one here.
Wa matomokiyo.
Number two.
Obuwe di.
Number two, the, the yellow shorts, shorts, you are number two.
Obuwe di.
There is number three there.
Obra ruala te.
Number three. Ne, there is number four here, there is number five, the head. There is number six, this side, this side, yes, number six, the blue t-shirt, number seven. You've got, you used three minutes. Once I stop you, you must know you have already exceeded five minutes. So we've got a blessing of extra two minutes. So we won't stop you at number three, we will stop you when you are at number five of your minutes. Okay, is there, is that, eh, number seven? Wait. Oh. You are number eight. We have got no guarantee that we will continue after this, eh, this round. Eh, you are number nine. Okay, you can start. For now, we are still sticking to the text, you, you, they are sticking to the bill, and you are doing well.
All right, eh, thank you. Good day, everyone. My name is Matudi Mashilo. I am from ward three in Bloubek municipality. Um, most of the things that I wanted to say, my peers have said them. Eh, for now, I, I will also want to touch on the powers that are given to the minister to expropriate the property of the owner. Um, I fully agree to the powers given to the minister, but they will always be a bad. Because it seems like the minister is the one in charge. I don't see, or hear, all the details of the property of the owner. Do the minister engage with the owner of the property? Because I believe that some of the properties being owned, some are heritage sites, and the minister will come and expropriate such property. I don't think it will be fair enough, because some properties are for the history of the locals. Eh, point number two. When the mining occur, there are species that need to be protected. Species such as protea, you know, the, eh, the importance of protea in our country? Protea, um, flora and fauna. If the mining occurs in, maybe in ocean or a river, does the chemical being produced can, eh, be harmful to other fishes, which are also important to us? And then in case of safety as well, I think, there wa, there was instance in, maybe for example, in Free State, where we saw on television and other media platforms, the dam collapsed. And as a result, people lost their lives because of the mining activities. I think, eh, the, eh, the government must also make sure that they protect the livelihood of the, of the locals as well. Above everything, I will also want to see more people or persons with disabilities being involved in mining industry. Women as well, and other marginalized communities. I thank you.
Eh, Richile, imena Matudi Mashilo. Sotala, sa lese, ndavaku subula, ele si, lava vanga rangas, se vanga subosha. Nito, wala wala, eh, shimbiri shinaro, le si, shingasala. Le si, ndavaku shkumba ngofu, ema kama timbalama, ni kuaka, holo bze. Ko ba, akota, ko ba, ateka, nunzu, kalavanga ba, ku varnayona, lo ki la ba kuteresua infumo, kumbekui exproprietor. La, lo kaka, rataka nunzu, lo kufana ku la nguti swat, mfanela, le angana to na, na matakele ya kona. Sotala, shitsamsekile, kambekuna, shiwe na shimbiri, kume shandeshmu, nangashkane ta.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Ndaten Tupi did say that largely to the powers of the minister, but concern about issues of the owner versus expropriation. But ultimately did not really mention whether he supports or he rejects the bill.
That's all, that's all. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Tawela. Kehawalusulwana, Lepelenggumi municipality, Ward nine. Eh, getheka mla waga anyo. Eh, gara gara, mla waga anyo, roots here in Obololo waga, or Remoto Afewa, eh, company if wa license, eh, lea kanzera country. But if a license, eh, in a office in South Africa. So, na wek sagista wore, by a license, eh, in a office, eh, ringi nyaga, we regela wana, ama tom. Eh, la we di, mo, wa ye pangon, wek isisinya wore, wa yepe. Oil wa ye pang, is a pele ele, eh, finished product, is kiasa pele, eh, ilo wana, wek wala barba, eh, weyaga, eh, ga, eh, luwa, eh, berdurela, genordila, yalewa.
Thank you. My name is Khawchale Solwani, Livubu, Ward nine. Greetings. I support the bill. I'm also saying the companies that would love to have license in South Africa should be given such licenses on condition that they have offices where they will be working from. They should also excavate the mines and when they have refined the oil, it should be a full, complete product before it leaves where they are. Thank you.
Tawela, wa imemuki Alfred Apani from Ward ten, Lepelenggumi. So we're going to be silly most of the time, ma, 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 so we get a bullet, eh, galawo, we're not sure more waka. Eh, taba yare, bili, kea maliwana, eh, kachincha mla waya yona, eswa yena xal. Paloka lere, tabelle, kuhpela nu, re nare limoga parliamenting, eh, mla we chenching. Taba yare, license if we, ba tuwaka ntle. Kiwa nela poso because no, re neli, ba li minche, zola ju mu hai, eh, re nyakoswa, kiwa ma, wa tuwaka, kiwa, saferen era, wey ninga, wa salio monlokal. So eh, ba ni ikawea mu hai, regaling, eh, license if we, ba tuwaka mu hai, ikawea pitira, ba kare, eh, license if we, ah, panikwale, wa nyakoswa, lepeka wana, akatwa, lepe. Because, eh, kalwale, ba ni minchi, and you're a leader, zamazam. Re wale leader zamazam because eh, re nama hai, arwono dea product refinalized. If finalize a kanyi, so eh, wuzarifao mon, wa la wa icha wisapie. So taba yu ikawerka beli, eh, mol re tlasa product, wa nea fella, eh, zamazama, kiwa wana, kareka, ikawea fasamori. So leta yari. Ona yale, re wala gari, eh, mine uwa, Lepelenggumi. Lepelenggumi, example, re neli, lonmili mona, incha platinum. Selela ya, wa nea platinum, awasa yachokumela because awasa leo nun. Haritaborwaka, varastimbekorwaka, maras, eh, snile, eh, arnaschaga. So when mine eh, eh, be hona mu hai, then rebeli, like, dohush, lidufisa, wa ni be wana, arwono re, renele problem, rekobona, galawo.
My name is Alfred Apani from Ward ten, Lepelenggumi municipality. I will only support this bill based on the following reasons or amendments. License for mining should be given to the local people. At the moment, we have this problem of the zamazamas because the license are not owned by the local people. So these people who owned this license, hire them out to the zamazamas. That's where we have a serious problems because our people are not benefiting anything from there. The other problem is this license look like they are being finalized from outside the area that the mine should be or where the mine is. And that's also a problem because a lot of things go wrong. As a result, that this license has been proved outside the area. Because a lot of things has to be taken into consideration when the license is issued. For example, in Lepel, in Lepelenggumi municipality, we have a platinum mine. But now of late, this mine is no longer being taken care of. Even the roads that leads to the mines are so dilapidated that we cannot even reach the mine. We are really asking for help. Thank you.
Eh, Tawela, kiya lewo, wa, na ki Ramporo Jimmy, who's from Ward three, under Blubek municipality. Getona le mula wana, o, obe ilo enkita folé, kati partimente yoo. O, mina, selo sakasiti, mori percentengi, toaki, kisa hosofala, eh, inge bedina mela, o, thaus twenty-five, o, kule schar. Eh, wa ri tiaka ki, ko Blubek? Eh, ba soba Blubek? Ba, 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 kiwa wa inu, fe ta otalatla, di be. Mara awana school, or a college or a school, that can teach our youth about, lija mineral resources school, urba itu, ka liju, ni petrulum, ka mukuli, petrulum, wa tuwaji, liwa langa jo. Gara, ba soba arna kwa, arna college, ba ilo, ba itu, lija mining and the likes. Ura itu, liju, ka muka, kuhu, ba tuwae, from Blubek to Johannesburg or Cape Town, and re pala, indige, to go, na eh, ya Blubek. Preferi, je, ebele, kuhpela la le, hush, malwora, wa leba, venisha mine. Ura ba tshale na ship about our children, maras, still, is ali, is ali mo processing. Re hefela, tipati ngaru, ko Blubek, re pala, indige, howo, ba soba re na, feli uha schoolu, lelun, stakona, utija, ba na, arna kha, di lija mineral resources and the likes. Tawela.
Good afternoon. My name is Jimmy Ramporo, Ward three, Blubek. I support the bill, but I have one concern. The ten percent offered is too little. The youth at Blubek are neglected. We do not have a school or a college built there to teach our children these mining issues. They have to leave the province to go to Johannesburg or to go somewhere in Cape Town to learn the skills. We kindly request that there should be a, eh, 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 a school built or a college built so that the children can be exposed to the curriculum of the skills that are offered when they have to go and mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The, Ndaten Jimmy also said, eh, not happy with the ten percent, maybe it should be seventy-five percent.
Excuse me, sir, I didn't hear, but thank you.
Eh, Tawela, na kena Samuel Mujela, o, taka fasawa, Ward three, Blubek municipality. Eh, na tava, eh, kwekwe, blalanga, o, na kitu manor, na mine o, fita. Awono, o, sanju, hiru, sanju, chena, kwe telle na, eh, le kuru, ki lebele, chilu, re, ba, ba, wa, sanale, war nar, hausu lo wana. Ebele, re kumananoro, wa la tameji, ka ma, arare, na kavaka, la ro, hausu, re, biseta, botata, wa di, wa di, ma role, re, di, neni. So, yale ya, war na, o, chiana kwe kanga, oro, o, wa hona, oro, hiri wa tu, i kuru, ebele, re lebele, chilu, oro, o, kahono, eh, fa benefiti kanga. And eh, re, re, taka mela, site ya, warena. And re lebele, chilu, kuru, le, ka, le ma, warena, o, wele, di, liju, di, nchi, di, liju, botakuwa, o, sanakuru, re, snari, tini, ki, kore, na, di, zela, di si, voti. Wana, wa di kolo, ba, ba, tampa, ka ma, arani, no, ka, kuru, ebele, re, mine o, sanju, cha, something, utusha, bleke, ya, warena. Utusha, kuru, le, wa na, di kolo, idi, ya, tsharoa, mori zele. So, ke kamo, weki, buchar na, wa, yushu, di, mine o, ka, chiana, kwe telle, lo, staka mela, wa tu, olohona, mo, bleke, kiwa, na, na, ki fita na, mo, Tawela.
My name is Samuel Mujela, Ward three, Blubek. My question is, how long does the mining sector take to operate? Because we have problems. It takes too long to operate and we, 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 we really have problems as far as that is concerned. And then, one other issue is, our roads are bad, we don't have bridges, we don't have clinics. And we have these problems where our kids have to cross rivers and our cars get stuck in the mud because of the rain. We really need help. Can you really help us in order to solve those problems? But the main issue here is, how long does a main mine take to operate? Thank you. And, sorry, and he support the bill?
Tawela, kama kha? Kalina ge Charles Mafaa from Ward eleven, Bolugwane. Na wekino, ko kuusha, wore, ana, mo, eh, yes, eh, o, tla ba, twelo, or ba tshare, di license, wo, paritaka, me, mining. So, the local stakeholders, twa na, diwi waga, and aro, ro, dima, ka, mo, eh. Ke ba ba, fe ba, ilo, or ba, kahono, o, to, sanam, mo, eh, o, kumana, exposure, learning more, ka dos, eh, sectors. O, dima, mo, kiwa, 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 le, katra, yah, eh, area, eh, ilo, or itla, we, on, like, the towns and townships, city. The benefactor, wa, na, na, mo, eh, cause, really, it's sancho, ro, ro, wele, le, 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 tso, ro, ro, ra, na, mo, ba, honu, benefit, thank you. Tawela.
My name is Charles Mafaa. I didn't hear properly which ward he comes from. He didn't mention that. I don't know. Ward eleven. Benu Bolugwane municipality. See, this is the question that I have. The people who are getting the licenses, are they getting licenses or to, from the sector to learn more, and, and, I mean, are they getting licenses to come and help? Or so that our people can benefit from their learning? Because we want our people to learn about the sector. Another thing is, um, people who are from the towns, the cities, are these people, how are these people going to be benefiting from this proposed bill? Thank you.
Tawela. Obela, ange, Bethuel Nluwu, from Bolugwana, Ward fourteen. Um, mono waga. Ki imaliwana, yela ya, ten percent or fifty-one percent. So then, o, tata waga, wo, kinalo, wana, wo, go, wana. O, garare, ulak, o, duki, tawa ya, di tenda, ra, mon, pakatina, warena. Di tenda, re, chegula, eh, shela ta, ifo, mo, tumu, o, o, eh, wan, ka, na, koe, telele, ka, 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 kabunchi. But ba wa, chi, ba, sokola, ka, mbereko. So, kuhpulo yaka, eh, be, eh, yah, wore, o, ba, juan, kubla, wa, tenda, ra, lady agent, because shela ta, eh, nchi, ya, kumo, kuwa, tu, bola, ba, tu, ba wa, chi, ba, sokola, ka, mbereko. Kethi ya, ke le juan.
My name is Bethuel Nluwu, from Ward fourteen in Bolugwane municipality. My view is ten percent to fifty-one, to fifty percent, it's okay, you can go with it. But we have a, 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 a serious problems when it comes to issuing of tenders. We have realized that tenders are given to one person and we don't understand how the agents operate. And as a result, that's, it's a problem because most of the people who tend us, they don't even get a chance of at least getting a tender so that other people should get work from them. And that is, is, is a various, eh, it's a serious issue. Thank you very much.
Just before, before, before the gentleman, um, we, we had, um, Ndaten Mafaa Charles, eh, who did not indicate whether he supports or disagrees. Um, likewise, Ndaten Nluwu also did not indicate, horuwa, eh, tech, hakota, hai, tech. Um, yano, nengka, re, ba, hele, horu, o, wano, o, haufi, akabona, horu, ba, fela, le, temo, kai.
Ndaten Charles, Charles Mafaa, Ndaten Nluwu, you did not state whether you support or you disagree. So, are you supporting that? Who, what's your name? Charles Mafaa is supporting.
Ndaten Charles is supporting?
Yes, sir.
Ndaten Nluwu?
Ndaten Nluwu, is he still around? Ndaten Nluwu, are you supporting or rejecting the bill? Hello? He's supporting the bill, Ndaten.
Okay. Thanks, thanks. The gentleman here?
Tawela, ki, kuro, we, Biana, Ward eighteen, Bolugwane, supreje. Eh, yaka, concern, eh, gore. Bili, o, separate a bili from minerals, eh, wa, ike mela. Onal, mo, ba, wancha, ba, ri, lo, di, rame, bereko. Ki, mo, kiwa, le, problem, or na, how is it going to make jobs or create jobs? Eh, pa le, chi, ku, create a jobs, ka, kwa, ra, di minerals and energy. But another concern is that on page, I mean, that is where they say two point seven plus thirty-one. Where they say they provide for ten percent interest participation by black persons in petroleum. And then they say we are going to have fifty-one percent black owns. Ah, kiwa, lo, o, tata, onam, wana, the reality is that we don't have money as blacks. So meaning that who is going to benefit in terms of where our blacks are going to get money? Because we don't own means of production, there are people who own means of production. Ourself is to sell labor to them. Now, why, how are you going, because it's very silent. I think here the state will be very clear to say, well, they are going to subsidize us in order for us to start that business because you cannot start business, katu, in the land. That is not possible. And that's why I'm having a very serious challenge in terms of that. And the other one is the issue of ten percent. Whereas we know the situation that we find ourselves in, reality now is that douring. We are so gone. There's no jobs, there's no work. But now, what about this ten percent? But in terms of reality, it should be at least fifty-one percent. But in terms of reality, it should be at least fifty-one percent. So that is going to assist the social expenditure. In terms of health system, you know, is affected, education is affected. So I think if we go for fifty-one percent, even though the capitalists will not allow that. And that's the reality, we'll have to engage with them. But my appeal is that if we go for fifty-one percent. But the other issue which is critical is this for us, we are coming from community here. We don't have anything, but now, how are they, this is going to benefit us? Because meaning that are they going to exploit that from their wasepela, waye babasamaya, wasbeli company? Because we need to have companies there, so that we must be able to work on those companies there. If the reality is that to create jobs there. But if they are going to take it and create jobs in routing, whereas you are going to be struggling. Because even the, the bill is silenced in terms of how community is going to participate. Because you must be able to participate as community members. But now the issue is that douring, we need to make sure that douring, we want to participate and have. At least, the bill must be clarified clear here to say, well, how are we going to benefit? Because if you say royalty, we don't know what do they mean by royalty. So if they say the community, the companies there, they benefit at least ten percent, it must be clarified. Kialo. Provided this, uh, subject to.
Tovela. He, because he was code switching, I resort to go to. To, I resort to what he has written there, that we should interpret for him into English. Golube mpiana of Ward eighteen, Polukwani Sabrejin. He says, my concern is the separation of the act itself. Because how is it going to create jobs if it failed in the energy and resource minerals to create jobs? Two point seven where they talk about participation of black people. We as a black nation do not have money. How are we going to get that money? Black people, um, cannot raise the fifty-one percent. We rather get the fifty-one percent from the, from the proceed. How is this benef, how is it going to benefit us? We need companies to communicate with us. But the bill is silent about how the bill is going to be, how the people are going to participate. And how the people are going to benefit. Now, the companies usually, uh, go in, in, in Juanesberg, in here. How are we going to be involved in those companies? How are we going to participate as people in this region? Because most of the time, they go to the cities. Thank you.
Tovela. Ki tumi chabatuka munkaka garan tro. Um, n'akana tlo, yama tlo, Ward eighteen, Polukwani Sabrejin. Lama thomo, kinyakoleka wuncha ore kesa pota the bill. Enake sapa ta kalwa kala, kenaga na ore, itlo dira, itlo dira lam merego, our job creation. Jekrata ngo dibulela kaga ra bili ye. Risa nchanarilelelechilu ore mine itlo diruwa kamo ona. Ve kehopela oro oska balidi piru chedibango ona kaga ra. Ha, 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 ha mine itlo ngodiruwa kamo. Cause ho katlava balidi piru adi ala ore, retlera rediskava ra oro realoala. Eh, mona, ba bilisinkiva rbocha ore, tilo chere itlo dira mine mo ritlo loala. Rehopela ore, ebe, 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 ebe n'twayamalina yama thomea, othokomela ore, community ayelowale. Ayelowale, iloachaki mine otlava we pihuha usile ba ona. Yenwa kehopela ore, eh, re odiriwa, mm, 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 job creation eba ona kammhano. Nantje kehopela ore, batu reba ira, reira mbatu kamo ka, resalelelele age. Cause, hanewele gelelelela age, le experience, le tor, ler tishetan twelo orana, asingera etanala skolo. Le ba bazenenge skolo, batukfeji singi ba iberik. Baba ngwe iwileru wuchu falai asinger berik, kalwa kala oru lelelechilu age. Nantje kehopela ore, slon yeso muolo muari, ye na kahona oberika meroku l'tlava lutli stegorena. Kehopela ora dumelale, le sa lelelelo oru nalage kaka. Re tjuanapeli, nabe kehopela ore, um, bili ye, re ipasi chi. Kehopela letlera ribidichi gape otsana, akirma mtlala ribidichi. Ore bili er tlera bolela ore sapa ta ora re sapa ti. Kehopela oska to chedi sapa ti charena, next time re lipasi choko pe. Laska talarbocha, ranui kua etama, stanate mara, nikilela honore ribidichi. Rele ribidichi la rbocha, rea sapa ta ore ibero ona. Rea sapa ta ore job creation ibero ona. Maro kehopela ore, le re sapa ti lele sepechi le fedichi kayona, den iwi na. Reboche ye, le re realiwi na, le narhonote ba kialebo.
I am Toma Tuo, from Ward eighteen, Polukwani re, region. Thank, greetings to our visitors. I support the bill based on the following eh reasons or amendments. The first thing, this bill should create jobs for us. Secondly, there should not be any secrets as far as the mining is concerned. Because we don't want to find ourselves sick because of the mining processes. Thirdly, the environment should be assessed in order that eh, our life and health should be taken into consideration. When the mine hired people, they should not look at age nor experience. Because we all need jobs. They must just hire us based on the fact that we want to work. No age limit, nor eh, 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 experience wanted. And the, the, the last point is, you are here, you want our contribution on this bill. When this bill has been passed into law, please come back to us and tell us your contribution made this bill into law. So that we must come and support you when you come back with feedback. Thank you very much.
Before I say what I say, Charles.
Bili inkabulela sekisbulelang?
Charles. Who is Charles?
Charles Okai.
Let me do something, yeah, can you come here, please?
Rehopela oro tlekenu.
Let me do something I've never done before.
Itlo dira se sinking kisi di rip.
Sorry if you are too handsome and you look young.
Kehopela tarala romo.
If you look young and you are too handsome, Charles, I want you to stand up here.
Kehopela roemefa?
You are a young person. You are making a law here.
Redira malao likono.
The actual person who's gonna be affected by this law is you and your generation.
Batu ba malao, toba aman karaka udira, kiwena, libago late la.
One old man said, if you give us a license or something for forty years.
Monkalo bo monoblisho roho karifan jale license.
In forty years' time, I'll be long dead.
Ah, itlo du lafa ona.
Sorry, I've got no intention to embarrass you, please bear with me, I apologize if you feel so. I want you to stand up as a young person.
Kinyakawiye me jale kamo swa.
Tell us in this law.
Ore boche koromalao ngwo.
What you as a young person and as young people, you want this law to say? Let me give you an example, if you say, just be bold, we want our young people must be, must not feel like they don't own their future. Tell us in this bill, if you say, this bill, I heard somebody said, this bill must prioritize young people, say so.
Kehopela ro bolele Charles jale kamo sawa goramalao.
If you say.
Re o bolela koromalao, ko ilongor, utlo khulara nabaso, bolela, o teka kama ba.
If you say as communities, we want that local communities be prioritized as the bill says. I want you to be free today, I've never done it anywhere. But I was worried when you were, when a young person seems to be doubtful whether he or she must say this thing. And, and start to like doubting, I want you to be bold and tell us, what do you want this bill? Because this is a bill, if it becomes law, it will stay for the next fifty or so, eighty years, if it is not amended. So I, I, I just wanted to give you that opportunity.
Kehopela ho, ho fasabaka hona jale ho.
Again, my apology if I'm doing drama about yourself, please accept me.
Kehopela swarello, akie, akie diri drama.
Sorry, sorry good people, I, I just felt, we must, sometimes, we don't yet give young people to express about the future. That is car, is being carried now, but will have implications to, through to them.
Kehopela oro boche romalao, kakanyo oro bolela likono, utlo sonarala ka hole na baswa. Kamosotla bilina buja bucho ba, 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 ba malao kakanyo, boche koruena, uniaka horu se chava sa renu. Ebe sonase ilongor si fiwa, munyetla pele, okadira ra sesin. Bolela may kutwaha omra, Mafan.
Okay, eh, kia, 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 kia dumé, ke sabushile jape ore. Na di, the stakeholder chidiri nyan, re, narilongor re bizira plala du business, renogo ba garaga, ganchu. Bar prioritizeana, ene eh, area ilongor juamoyona, bayilelela kalitule, lele joan, ore. Kanetera nyaga batu pakibazana kamo. Even if aren't eh, that capability outzana ra, zana mon cheni uan on, but, reka chanela, reyabe. O, o wuncha oru ne, it's okay, n'tre eh, Charles, it's ama so, uidiya so, then, or, le ba batla ngamo mrao. Bahonu gurudiwa, reyabe, reska tarsanya ka eh, batu wotwa intle, oru batu baradi elemero goki.
I would like to say that it is good that this law has been passed and I think we should be prioritized as a youth. So that even in the future, we should know the channels, how should we go in, what is it that we should do? Unlike depending on people from outside.
So in essence, I, that's why I wanted, I hear you. In essence, you are saying, one, as young people, you must be skilled on the relevant skills. That will make you participate in the industry. I want to learn these things, okay. No, you can sit down.
Relevant.
Eh, I'm taking the last round now, but if you are not speaking to the bill. I will say, no, can you hold on? We will tell you how to handle what you'll be talking about. Because in other areas where we have gone, we listened to some things and then somebody writes back and say. I was never given an opportunity to make my contribution on the bill. Instead, the committee listened to things that were not relevant to the bill. So I don't want to lock that those people who wants to talk to, only on the bill, please.
Reto chiya eh, batu wama felle lo ba roto ngobledisha nalebo ona. Fela sekisna kera tanongo se thokomili sha kogore. Re kasi tumelele man, kuma man wa tamu, asabolele kaga malao, mukakanyo. Hoi tamu, utle uwolele, sesi we kama lao kakanyo, ka ore, malo barila ra shuto kama noana, ore, ridumelati vatru. Baba ngwe ba bolela, kalidu chedi sa amane ho le malao kakanyo. Kahona, se ba ore hewi takuan, ota, utlo le, bolela kalidu ntajeu, di sepelela na na ho, le malao kakanyo, ka ore, ki sesi ritli chiwa fa.
Please note again, we said the bill only regulates the petroleum industry, not mining. Petroleum.
Salesan jostro komela koru malao kakanyo, u, utlolaola petroleum, isi ho mining.
Now, let me take, is, are there any people now, three minutes each.
Ikabakona le baba sanya ngongo bolela rto, afamisuzi.
We still want to raise their hand so that we close after.
Ba, ba sanya ngongo bolela, ba tlekenu, ka ore, rata wakotwa lela.
Any hands?
Ha, ho, unaleba twawa tlayimisha imazogore.
There is one at the back, yes, we are number one. You see, I know people, they waited for you, for your hand, so that they can be agitated. Next to you, there was number two. Eh. Sometime, sometimes I have a problem of not seeing in front and see at the back.
Eh, kinalo butata yawa wona gua mrao fela, kitla hona ho.
Next to you, oh, number three. After this hands, we are closing, is there any other hand?
Rea twalela, kivali, kapakona li, omungwe wo ah.
Going one.
U, u, rea twalela, rea twalela, rea twalela.
Going two.
Rea twalela.
Going three, we are closing after this three.
Kamra waga, baba ra roba boleji.
Inputs.
Retabi re twaleji, boleli shanuyari na.
Oh, number one is still writing.
Oh, wama thomosa njanana, aitukisha.
You can come, number one, but I'll allow you to write whatever you are writing.
Kitla, o dimelela goru, uiti kishé, mona re shu.
Uh, thank you Chairperson. A lot of people have spoken. Most of the issues were covered amongst others, participation of young people eh, in the petroleum industry. Uh, I'll just, uh, do in brief, there is another company that is called PetroSA that is playing a role in the very industry. And its role is not being captured anywhere in the bill. And then, secondly, I wanted to speak about the issue of consultation. I think it's section nineteen and twenty. It speaks about the applicant who must conduct the process of consultation. Secondly, it says the agency may, if there are some issues, uh, conduct the, uh, consultation itself. My feeling is that it should not just be the applicant, because in most cases, when the applicant himself conduct those kind of consultations. There is always high level of dishonesty and then they make sure that whatever they present, it covers the side of the story. Irrespective of the genuine realities on the ground. Therefore, the consultation that must take place, it must be inclusive of the agency. If it means the agency must have enough human resource whereby consultations are done and then they said one or two to go and be the observers. Let it be so. Because the committee that is going to deal with the issue of objections, it must not only rely on what the applicant is saying. It must also be informed by what the agency is also saying on the basis of what they had on the ground. Uh, yeah, part of what I wanted to raise, like I said, has been captured by other comrades or people on the ground. But their view is that the consultation must always be inclusive of the agency. Another aspect that I wanted to raise is the benefication part of it, it's also not being included. Uh, we know that where there is exploration of resources, somewhere, somehow, there has to be a process of benefication. Whether it's traditional leadership involved or just ordinary people involved, where there is no traditional leadership. Uh, the issue of benefication must always take place. Uh, can even it go to an extent of including buzzaries for young people in the area? It can include providing resources, building schools, this and that. But the process of benefication, where there is exploration, has to be included in the, in the package when people are involved in the exploration in the area. Uh, thank you Chairperson.
No, thank you very much.
Um. Eh, Reshile, emina tau mhuoya, kusuka ekawa, Ward six, Lapulukwani. Sutala shalishinda waku la wala yshona, se banwan ba wala wala yshona, koba timaka timbertinaru, letin la waku wala wala itona. Kasima kusungulale la waku la wala yona, lokaro kuba roha iti maka.
ta, kuba kufambi wakuinksera maboneleba, aki kumbeti consultation. Kukunga vin, louis, ay endlaka shikombe lo, shakuwa atira kunga wa akurikuchela kume mtiro. Ngwan, louis afanlaka afamba atela ayinkisela mabone lo, nasu bumabmelo sa ba aki. Akubi naswi engesan fumulis naso, nasu ingenelela akun, si basika re si ingisela maboneleba aki. Ikwa kulu kubabumeru enlisaku, kuba kurilo endlaka shikombe lo, louis afamba kaka ra ayinkisela supabmelo sa ba aki, entlini kame mtiro, le i baka irko. Komborakuwa kuba louis endlaka shikombe lo, ikuba lokaka ra ayinkisela ma, maboneleba aki. Angaswese ka hintela ya ku si seketela yeena, si seketela na lesi yeena, ala baka kufikela la son. Emakumka si kukutumbetiwa lesi ba aki babula kason, nasu bilelo, lesi bangaba ka naso. Ikwa lo si engesan fuma naso, nasu fana swashipemu, shakuinksera maboneleba aki. Makayngwane ikubuyeriwa kaba aki la kutiro waka ko, na kumbeti kucherwa ko. Ya stewa mkaru utalala kucherwa koko, na kuba kurin na mtiro ya ku ba aki bandawale ba fanele ba buyeriwa. Kunga ba tuosi, kunga ba ba aki. Kumbeshani makayngwane ingalangtiswaka, ikwa banbaku masupuno swashati mali, swakuenda tijonzoko mbi tibazari, kuba navona ba buyeriwa ekati ndao tetu, inko.
Eh, greetings everyone, eh, my name is Elliot Mamali from ward twenty-eight Bulukwani. Eh, mine is, eh, eh, kisho tiguru, okay, so thanks. Utseutse yakakuore, I support this program. Evile re level wale parliament itavatu neretuwa re, re warlimutlu utlu. And then eh, re support agamkwanu, yakai muela uli percentage chil. Njerukupela orne, etlisti fuhone yak proposal, eh, the percentage chila mo, kuba twasu, percentage chila inone, es nonona orne, batwabarunalubona, baho noto, onona, ba emelele, baho noto, o, otusha batwabobona ka bobon. For example, kinyoko famutla, angere wabona anganavyale, heo kalebelela moreksa ni petrolum. Eita otokumanaye baba angwe, kapababa angwe, marabasutu, inowa muke tanyana, umuti tanyana. So, percentage chile ikanoona, limusho, watale, le, le pleni orne, ikasista yuan, batwari, angere layazor batwara nabatuwata lingmari. So parliament ya taga strategy, so rekabatu xa yuan, or, percentage chawa na ifa kumanilu yu, ili ona inone, kiwonawkarne, rekayitavela gulu, kauri yalu ya hau la yaya realewo. No, 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 kialewo, onona, gerawore percentage chawa na, for example, lino ba ulimu, like seventy-five, seventy-five percent, ya, wabona inone wana hoshi.
My name is Elliot Mamadine, ward twenty-eight Bulukwani. I support the bill. Thanks to parliament for bringing this idea to us. But my concern is the percentage. Black people should have more so that they can help their people. So he has just mentioned that at least thirty-five percent. Uh, the government should also come and explain how this could be done. Because our people do not know the skills, they don't have the skills. They do not have information on how about the sector is being run. I thank you.
Uh, he spoke about, not thirty-five, seventy-five. Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to elaborate what is in my mind. Um, my name is Maragem Mukamola, from ward twenty-seven, Manguen area. Upstream, eh, petro, eh, petroleum, eh, resources, eh, development bill does not include rural communities at all. So I have, I've got the benefit of the fact that this bill only suits those who are rich politicians and their families. I will support, I will support this bill. If the government get only sixty percent and give rural communities forty percent to benefit eh, and to develop their areas, including youth and disabilities. Our children are educated, they do not find jobs. Eh, these resources must come up eh, with something that can elevate the rural areas to balance poor and rich areas. All roads, sports facilities must be improved, as well as water and sanitation, if indeed we are beneficiaries. Thank you.
Okay. Now we've, um, eh, come to the end of the session, I will make some few announcements. First, let me thank all of you. Um, with all the limitations that you had, if not ninety-five, at least ninety percent of all of you came here. You spoke exactly on what was the purpose of this session. And we will take your submissions. Um, and I think some are even helping us to understand certain things that we might have taken for granted. I think someone, for instance, stood up here and said, the consultations for a permit or a right must not be conducted by the applicant only, but they must also include the agency as an authority responsible for regulation. The reason I called Charles here, I want our younger generation to know that when the law is being made, we rely on them. They are the ones who bear the brand of unemployment. Who bear the brand of lack of skills. So I want them everywhere now, even eight others, you know where we go, agitate for you to articulate the future ahead. But also, you, you, you have seen some of the regulations that we thought were controlling the manner in which business must be conducted. So I always say, in our social system, every time you build a crawl and you want your cattle or goats, not to, goats are the worst ones. You want the goats not to wake up and they are already on the, on the, on, on the fields. You will always have to close a hole that they've opened in the crawl to go out. Sometimes our social system always demands that you must only regulate people, otherwise if they are not regulated, they will do as they wish. In the past, we were not consulted when the legislation is made. So now it's very important that when such opportunities come through, we utilize them to our maximum benefit. Letlenka bu, inchili kono kutojuta, de kubala chale na pele, kubane re na, re nyakadi kubala cheyi jongorudijwakule na lelinsichab. Again, we take your inputs very seriously. We had a very good fruitful eh, experience on public hearings on this bill in this province. Unfortunately, there is no award, otherwise if there was an award, we will be compelled to say, out of the four public hearings conducted here, which one was the best. All I can say is that treat yourselves as amongst the best, if you are not the best. Now, from here, we are still going to other provinces. Now, let me clarify this thing, it may not be a big issue, no, we don't give three days, I said. In Limpopo, you were lucky because we could do four public hearings instead of three. For instance, in the northern Cape, we will do three, not four. Northern Cape, three, not four. When parliament said, when the national assembly said, they are not convening this week, they are leaving this week to committees of parliament. You happen to be the next province to visit, you fell on the period of the sitting of parliament, which is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we added Friday. So you are the only province, for now, that I can see, it had the opportunity. Other provinces, unfortunately, parliament on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is in session. We only do Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So you are the only province that I would say, you fall eh, on that luck that we could do almost a, a bigger time gap for participation. For now, for now, we did the public hearings. We did the submission, our submission, written submissions. They were opened and we closed last year. But like those one I said, when they were making their inputs here, if they are written, they would like, they must send them to the staff in that corner. Now whilst we'll be going to the northern Cape, Free State, northwest, Pumalanga and Gauteng. I will advise you, if you want to use that op, that period, use this time to write to the committee on any ideas that might happen. There could be people who are, who would have wanted to be here. There could be people who are here, who are not sure about their inputs, but based on what now, they would have con, con, consumed. But also those who would have made inputs here, who would want to refine their inputs, I will give you an email address that you can send, we call it your correspondence to that, to those email addresses. You can write to Abos, Abos, bos is B O double S, at parliament.gov.za.
Abos dot at parliament?
Dot gov.
Dot gov, that is gov.
You can also write to Akotze. Akotze is K O T Z E, Akotze at parliament.gov.za.
Akotze. Wana emailing yeo, Akotze at parliament.
Dot gov.
Dot gov. Dot.
Z A. Though you have concerns, sometimes you can use, but don't abuse. You can use that address because we are also a committee that is responsible for mining.
Yale, oka osho, oka ngala, oshumisha addressi, ho bani, ro na, committee yarin na. Ki committee feela ya mine, feela, hee hona li di shansha cha, di jedi sar, aming. Le ka ba ngala, vata di fitcha cha, o bengba chona.
But please, don't write about, "We sold this." Unfortunately, committee of parliament can't deal with transactions.
Sorry.
I'm saying a committee of parliament can't deal with commercial transactions.
Committee yarin na, ha eshumishani, li di huaybo cha ucha adibuleje.
But the problems that you are having with the mine, let's make an example. You can write if the mine is not compliant with their social and labor plans. The mine is eh, is, there is a risk of mine health and safety. Some board even talked about the cracking houses because of the blasting. Those are things that are affecting the community because of the existence of the mine.
Kabakala horre, mo, mo hono ngli filo, ngli woli ngonona, honali mine. Feela hona lebo shaidi, yo bo ni, mine no udidira, di, di, di na li di crack di padluhile. Ba tuwa avajo, honali loje di ngche sa di kuishi, che lo horre di shola ke mine, ngala, oru butixa katun.
We will make the department account on why those things are happening when there are officials employed to make sure that there is compliance with the law.
Ri tla dira horre, ri ti, di tsau tsau che, ributi shakhoror, ke kaleba kalanlesa tro komeli. Ho bani, mine no osanetsu horu, oslo komeli, ufilemelaau, e lau la, ho roba sanetsu horu, ba di re, heba lima filo abat.
Now we've come to the end, the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much. We had a very good treatment in this province. Thank you very much.
Ri tlele pele jong, hu meri lebo cha tsaro yalin na, libui tsaro balina rialebo.
There is only one announcement I always, even if I were to be in charge of as a program director in a function, that announcement I never make because it leaves eh people no longer in good terms. But I'm told there is something after this session, so you must not move.
Kinalabu shaidi, yo ore, leba le, o tisha tibishu ye unwe. Feela, senka le tibisha ngoro, honale se litlo go, le sebo tjomara. Litla tibisha horre na, kotoli la, angotlo kamo, kana kue, horre itualae.